Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Village of Downers Grove Joint Ad Hoc Committee of the Downers Grove Village Council and the Downers Grove Library Board's trustees. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to our June 26, 2025 meeting. First item we'll go to after calling it to order is a roll call place. We love roll calls so much.
Commissioner Todd.
I'm here.
Commissioner Sadawi.
Here.
Justine Kuntia.
Here.
Justine Williams.
Here.
Sure, thank you. And next item is our review and approval of our minutes from our June 5, 2025 meeting. Are there any changes, corrections, or edits from any members of the ad hoc committee? Seeing none, I would motion to approve.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Minutes are approved. Awesome. All right, we get right to item four, which is the meat of tonight's discussion. As previewed last time, the focus tonight is really talk about the draft report that this august ad hoc committee will generate before the deadline has been given to us. I confess that I had some thoughts and ideas that I was going to share in advance on that. I did not have a chance to share them in advance, but I do have them with me. And I'm sure you all do too. So you might be wondering why this is behind me. That's because I thought we could just sort of sketch out an outline of the draft report, and then we can talk about how it's going to be written. But I thought if we came to some consensus about what the structure of the report was, then that would be a good use of our time tonight. Any different thoughts from members of the committee?
None.
Before we do that, the other question that we posed last time was, is there anything else that we should think we should investigate or research before we start drafting the report? Not that we can't do that while we're drafting the report, but is there anything that member of this subcommittee, sorry, not subcommittee, ad hoc committee feels strongly about investigating or researching before we begin to draft?
No, can I make a related point? So if we are not going to invite Professor Shuket to appear as an expert to provide his services, then I think we should communicate with him and provide some sort of courteous response to him. And that could be through Matt Topic, since he was the one that initiated that interaction. Or it could through the village, because the village staff have been the most recent people. Or it could be both. But I think it would be courteous and appropriate.
I agree. I just want to make sure that we were all of the mind that we weren't going to be doing anything further. If we're of the mind, I can present.
Right, so to answer your question, no, I don't have nothing else. And in light of that, my comments.
Okay, because there was another speaker that we reached out to. So we ought to pick up on your suggestion and communicate to both of them that we think we have enough information for our purposes. And while we really appreciate their responsiveness and willingness to participate in this process, we will not contribute on their summer. And I think it probably is best coming from the same channel as the original contact. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So everyone's in agreement? All right, cool. All right, so structure the report. Like I said, I had some thoughts, but really what I thought we would do is collectively is come up with an outline of what the structure of the report would look like, and then we can fill in the gaps, from the meat on the bone, so to speak, later, from the materials that we have. Obviously, we have a lot of, I'll call it, a literature review. We have other statistics and research that have been compiled as part of this process. And we have the exceptionally valuable testimony, if you will, from our subject matter experts. And putting all that together, maybe adding a couple things from the ad hoc committee itself, will probably get us a pretty good draft. Does anyone mind if I sort of sketch out what I'm thinking, and then you can just stop me along the way, and I'm happy to be the scripter? It's a nice thing about not being so formal, is we can just get up and draw. Any objections?
No objections.
All right. This is truly how the sausage is made. Okay, so obviously, we'll have a title to the report. So I'm just going to call it Report for now. I'm not going to write all that out. We may want to have an executive summary of some kind, but we can come back to that later, because obviously, those are written after the report is written. Then some kind of an introduction, which identifies who the members of the ad hoc committee were, who the contributors were, acknowledgements for all those people that have helped us do this job, that kind of a thing. Then I think we need to have a summary of the charge that was given to the ad hoc, which is basically the resolution. That's sort of why should we create this document? Stop me at any point in time. Then I was going to suggest we have sort of a summary of our meetings and activities, which ties right into the charge that we were charged with doing certain things.
Is that, so are you including the village council meetings there, or just the ad hoc?
Just us.
Okay. I would at some point in there include kind of the context of how we got to the ad hoc committee. Not just the resolution itself, but how we got to the resolution.
I'd also note that I agree, and we have passed our own resolution that describes how that, from the library's perspective.
Good point.
Got to the point that we are.
That's, those are good edits.
Okay.
Because if we ever are going back, you know, we'll kind of end history, if we ever want to come back and see kind of how we got here at this moment, just like we wanted the history of the Aurora model, right? It'll be very helpful for people in generations forward to understand the context of how we got here and what we're for.
And the history of 1962, which apparently is incomplete.
Right, we're getting there. Yes, so this would include things like the meetings that this ad hoc committee held, high level description of the research, of the literature review, if you want to call it that, the subject matter expert input, not the substance of it, but that they did these things.
Right, yeah.
And then I think we ought to point out that we did not request nor reassign any additional degrees, because that's also in our charter. And I'll send this around. I'm not going to write it all on. Then I think we can get right to summary of findings, and in no particular order. And a lot of this is pulled out of the literature summary that we already have. We would have, like I said, certainly can add to this. Sort of the Illinois Library History, there's a section in the summary about that. And then I suggest that we go verbatim, but give something like a quick synopsis. Then we talk similarly about briefly library governance and legislature. I don't know. I'm just going to call it governance. This is all background stuff. Then the DG history. So this is 1962. I'm just going to call that history and governance, which is sort of how we all get here. We can point in sort of what happened in 1962 referendum, change of council management of government, subsequent changes affected by the village down to proaction. Some things weren't done. We're leaving the question of whether that can, would have showed, or whatever. That's not going to, when I went to it, I think we should note it, since we've talked about it. Then I thought we have some kind of a discussion of Downers Grove Public Library. I can't think of a better word than structure.
What do you mean by structure?
Well, it's current state as a component part of the municipal library.
Okay.
That's what I mean by that.
You mean like the relationship?
Correct, correct. So I'm just going to put component. And then I thought it would be useful to have some, oh, I'm sorry. In not versus, I was going to say versus to say in the context of other libraries. And this is where we could pull in the statistical information we have about municipal law, it's time ago, how many are elected, how many are districts, how many are municipal, how many are blah, 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 blah.
So that's where we would identify that we're a unicorn.
Yes, in fact, that's going to be the final point.
We were a unicorn, of course, and now we're a unicorn, and we don't know why.
Yeah, so we have stats unelected, we have stats appointed. And this is all existing information that we have. And then, yes, I will just put unicorn, we all know what that means. I think since we have the information, we can have some information about trends over the last, I don't know if you want to say 20 years or 10 years. You're probably going to say, what do I mean by trends? To the extent that there have been any movements or shifts from either district to municipal, or vice versa, or whatever it is, just statistics.
If we include that, though, I would not want to do that without context.
Coming, coming, good point. So the next point would be basically your context. It would be sort of sample, I always call them case studies. I don't know if we want to go to every downstate library that's ever done a change, but I think we could say, for example, some did it because of tax, some did it because of why. Maybe even introduce the Aurora story here. Just a thought.
Yeah.
But maybe extra context.
Because it feels like we got a couple of reasons why. And one was to essentially be in control of their own tax levy. And the other reason was really to expand their base, right? Those were kind of the two big reasons that I think our experts identified.
Yes, so it would be, this would be the context for these trends. And without going into some exhaustive research, and then point out, for example.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
On the stats elected versus appointed, sort of stuff was under this one. Would that be narrowed to just the municipalities that are similarly sized? You may recall when we got that trend data, I suggested we narrow it to 30,000 to 70,000. And I thought that that data sample was much more relevant to this discussion than the broader data sample that's, you know, less outside of that scope. It sounds, would we use that similar sample?
Okay, sure.
I think it's a good place to start.
Then sort of the big ticket items, and obviously, the purpose of putting these up here so we can add to it, or take me off if you don't like it. We would then get to the meat of the bone, which are attributes of elected, attributes of appointed. And we heard from our speakers in particular, the common elements, things that they share, which I think is important to note.
Yeah, yeah, I think it is too.
And I didn't put this down here, but this would focus on the lit and the subject matter experts, primarily. And then some kind of conclusion and key takeaways. So I have some words up what points. Get out of the way.
So one thing you said, well, I will quote what you said, because I might misattribute you. What do we mean by attributes? That word is in the resolution in the charter, what we've been calling the charter. So I, some have said that that's pros and cons, but maybe it's not that specific. It's just features. I don't know what the word attributes means in the context of our task. And it's in the resolution, so I guess we're stuck with it.
It's the order of reason I chose it. I, well, just to answer your question, and then we can reflect. Let me stop for a second. Obviously, this is a structural discussion. The next step would be to actually put the substance under these headings. And so the substance will ultimately answer your question. But what I at least was thinking when I put this up there is it's the, we have, based on the literature review that was conducted, we don't have any very good literature discussion of, what do you want to call them, pros, cons, attributes, whatever, of specific library boards in terms of elected versus appointed, we still haven't. But we have a bunch of stuff that talks about appointed versus elected generally, which I think we can share, because not surprisingly, it's a whole lot different. Our subject matter experts really got into the details of what, very well, I thought, of elected, you kind of have this, or you can kind of have that. I'm not going to say what's good or bad, but I think we all asked very good questions.
Yeah.
As to, do you find you have a more diverse representation? Well, what do you mean by diverse? And we can include all that kind of stuff, and then we don't have to say, well, I should say that diversity is a good thing. But what that diversity looks like is different than we heard some of our subject matter.
So it's not going to be a table with pros and cons.
No, 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 no.
No, I was thinking.
That's not how I was going to see it anyway.
I was thinking it was more of a narrative.
Yes.
Okay, I'm supportive of that.
Yeah, I mean, I would think it would need to be a narrative, because it would be similar to the way that they described it, right? Like, you would have to say, you know, elected could be a diverse board if you happen to have, you know, somebody, just like they said, right? Who is really dedicated to ensuring that it's a, right?
I agree. The only reason why I framed it in that way is because if you asked me in February, early February, upon hearing the second joint meeting, it sounded like there were several commissioners that literally wanted a list of pros and cons. And obviously, things have evolved, and we have gathered more information. And I think this adheres to the spirit of the resolution or charter. But like, my framework at that time was set with a certain expectation, and now this is different from that. So I'm just posing the question. I'm comfortable with where we landed, I just wanted to understand your reasoning.
I am confident that if we tried to actually put together a set charter of pros and cons, we would never get done.
Well, we may disagree, though.
Well, right, because a lot of it, I'm much more in favor of put it out there, and people can draw what they want from the narrative.
Yeah. I mean, for me, that was initially even from the very beginning, kind of how I viewed this as well.
I also think that's more impartial.
Correct, which is what I wanted to be.
My two criteria was that this should be sound, and it should be objective. So I don't think it needs to be comprehensive. So I suppose that would be why. Other question as it relates to this, we have a, in the resolution, sort of, that patch all, sort of, there are any other possibilities, other structures, or whatever. Is that only going to be represented in this through the sections where we talk about the Aurora model, the nonexistence of a hybrid model? Wherever we want to bring that in is more in background and not in, sort of, this is something that has attributes?
I, that's a good question. And partly wants to address that once we get some words on the page. I think we might find that attributes of unicorns, and in some respects, the whole Aurora exercise was a unicorn.
Yeah.
That those are other things that we're going to describe attributes of based on our research. I think in some respects, we don't, I mean, what was proposed with the Aurora legislation never happened, so I mean, I don't know what attributes we can describe to it. And to the extent that we're a unicorn, I don't think we need to tell the community attributes of the Downers Grove Public Library. I think that's a given and a well-known value.
Okay, I agree.
And I don't, and to your point, I don't know what else we'd be looking for attributes of.
Yeah.
We asked all our, we asked our experts, and we did research, and I think we've covered the waters. If we haven't, then that's one of the questions of, are there gaps that we need to fill?
Oh, K T A, key takeaways.
Key takeaways.
Okay, so I can imagine. Okay.
I just made it up. Largely because of space constraints. So this again would be the starting, if we all are generally in agreement with this, this would be the starting point. It's not saying we couldn't add things as this is being written, because our next meeting isn't until July 31st.
Correct.
31st. And I think the idea would be to have a pretty solid draft done by then. In a perfect world, I'm thinking, Commissioner, sort of like what we did with some of our planning documents. By the time, the council talks about them, they're pretty close to being final, not that things can't change, but they're pretty close to being final. And this is going ahead, regret this, and then I say, I don't think it's going to be that hard to put this together.
I'll ask you at the end.
The biggest challenge I see is we got such great information from our subject matter experts. I want to make sure that it's adequately and fully represented. And there may be an issue, or I can go back and look at minutes, or we all have notes. Nobody wants to watch the recordings.
That was one question I was going to raise. So the minutes serve their function, minutes sort of have general description as of things, but not verbatim. There are transcription services. I don't know how expensive it would be for the village to get that, but would it be worth getting a transcript of those two meetings on?
Yes, and one thing I would want to try always is the no cost or low cost option. I think we could literally throw these into Copilot.
Yeah, that's what my firm does.
Same.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that would be largely to make sure we haven't missed anything. I think most of us have very good notes of what the key points are.
And all of us probably have good notes.
Yes. Are there elements that are missing, or that anyone feels strongly should not be up here? Obviously, these things are, these are added.
I like Mr. Mark.
Any other thoughts? Okay, execution. I guess this is a more broad conversation, is what are thoughts into having this drafted? Because there's a number of different ways that this can happen. One person could sort of start, come up with a draft, and then move it around, or, but I, if I ever participated in an ad hoc committee's draft report before, I've long since forgotten it. What, from staff perspective, what do you recommend or suggest? We're pretty comfortable putting draft out. It's kind of what we do for most boards and commissioners. So I think we could follow this outline and get it in draft form to the members, by the way. Should we, and would it be reasonable to do it sufficiently in advance to report for some preliminary edits? Because what I, I don't want to turn this into a draft by committee, you know, upon a tenant, because that has a way of never ending. But I think it would be helpful to all of us to see the wet clay on the potter's wheel.
I share concerns about too many cooks sometimes.
Yeah.
I'm countering that at work right now, so.
So the process that we've used for like guiding DG, those kind of things, sort of a meeting-centric focus, where it comes out just in a couple of days beforehand, and then people can react to it at the meeting, that is an option. Revolts of the guiding DG.
Yeah, like we've gotten maybe, a lot of the guiding DG we got maybe like, what if we did advance or something? And then this movie could just, like, my main thing would be like, I just want to make sure, like, we didn't miss something from the attribute of appointed or something. That, to me, is kind of, I feel like, probably where I should just have that extra stuff. And that's the, that's where we can meet back, you know. Most of the things, I don't think we're going to have a whole.
No, and most of that is already in our.
Already put together.
Probably, yeah.
I have one question, though. In terms of timeline, typically, a report's going to be an iterative process. We're not envisioning at the next meeting approving a final report, correct? We're going to discuss the report, we can give feedback. And then there could be additions after that, because if that's the case, then I'm fine receiving it on a reasonable number of days in advance of that meeting, reading it, reacting to it, taking notes, and then providing feedback at the appropriate time. And then at the next meeting, maybe get a more solid draft that reflects our feedback.
So like, what, I, yeah, I mean, we can do that. Or, I mean, what we have done in the process of like, something like getting DGs, if there's something big or something that we wanted to change, we can do that before we get to the next meeting, so they know that in advance, right? So, and then, you know, we can have kind of those big things, discuss it amongst ourselves at that meeting, and then hopefully, maybe at the next meeting, even potentially have like a final draft to approve, pending any small changes we might have at that meeting.
I think we're staying close to that.
Yes, 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 but it's more gay.
Yeah. A draft between this meeting and next meeting, a discussion at next meeting, and then a goal of having a final draft by the meeting after that.
Correct, correct, to approve, yeah.
With a reasonable gap between meetings, I don't know what we scheduled to take, but such that they can do the work, right?
Correct.
We haven't picked a meeting post-July 31st. We are ahead of schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
But on the other hand, I think we wanted to stay ahead as good.
We did, yes, yeah.
So my suggestion would be.
Just full starting things, starting to get ready, yeah.
Right, my suggestion would be that, well, this gives, this gives more than months to prepare the draft. And certainly, we can interact between them, that if we meet on the 31st and have a pretty well-developed draft, I think we can point out whatever it is we want to do, and then hopefully, set another meeting reasonably close to that. So enough to get the work done, but not a month later.
A bit, I guess, yeah.
Right, because our deadline is the end of September, and I just want to be mindful of that.
Yeah, and some people are sending kids off to college.
Right. Some people.
Not naming any names.
I like that.
Okay.
Sound good? Do you all?
Well, that was the last thing I had, was expectations delivered for the July 31st, 2025 meeting. But maybe in light of people going off to college, that we, not tonight, but we start to talk about what the next dates would be, so we can get all that worked out. Being mindful that we want to, all want to wrap this up before September, if possible.
I think that, I think our last bullet went out before, so I'll cut it out then. Make sure everybody's, everybody's dates are still.
Okay, I think mine are. Anything else on the outline of the report, the execution, how we're going to get done, and then our next step? Anything from our brilliant staff on this topic? Or is there sufficient?
This is very well crafted whiteboard work. We'll take a picture of the whiteboard, we'll get it for the basis of the report.
Learning the best.
Yeah, I think we have a really good. I don't see taxi streaming services on the board, though. Flip it over, left.
And you might not. Stay tuned.
TV.
Okay, anything else from the ad hoc before we go to public comment? Trying to be efficient. All right, nothing. All right, well, we don't have a whiteboard, but you do have a podium. So good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. This is the section being where we invite any member of the public to please come up and share what's under mine. We only ask that you keep your comments to the very narrow focus of this ad hoc committee, which is pretty much behind me. Any public comment? Good evening, welcome.
Just a question with respect to this draft report that is going to be submitted sometime in a few days, in advance of July 31st. Will that be posted for public consumption as well, so we can review it just a second?
Yes. And questions or comments from members in the audience? Good evening, welcome.
Small thing, but I am thinking I might want to put the attributes appointed before elected, since that's our current, so, that's all I got.
Let it never be said the government wasn't responsive. Done. Evening, welcome.
So, I have two questions. Will you include the Cicero and Beren case studies? I think they are much more applicable than the Aurora one, in my opinion. But I don't want them to be forgotten without approval because I do think they are important piece of information and evidence. The other thing is, will you include that an elected board would create a new tax district? This was mentioned by our first expert. I think again, that is important information that's still within the scope of the committee that any elected change, any changes to the library board from an elected board would create a brand-new tax district for residents. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from members of the audience? Okay, well, thank you for being with us tonight. Some of you have been with us the entire way. It's always good to see you again. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, they ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, underopposed? Thank you very much, stay cool.